I am calling the meeting of October 10 to order and we will start with a pledge to the flag. Jerry, what's the name?
Sure.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And happy with you.
Yes. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Stransky.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mary Strong.
Yes. So, we start with public communications and this is for any items that are not on the posted agenda but are within the jurisdiction of the city and we're limited to three minutes. And no, well, I should put it the other way, criticisms of the city and our staff and so forth are allowed, so you can address us on any issue. We do not take action on any items that come under public communications because they have to be on a closer agenda, so if we think it warrants it, we can set it for a future agenda. So, public comments?
My name is Barbara Plaza and this is getting to be old news to me. I finally found out now that knowledge is very important. Coming to know now after four years of all the torment that I've had gone through and endured with Bill Schaefer, now I've come to find out that he's a retired reserve for the Willets Police Department. No wonder nobody wanted to cite him for trespassing on my property, especially you, Gonzalez. I came to you in 2014 and asked you for some advice and all you could do was, Mr. Schaefer wants to put me under citizen's arrest. I'm ashamed of now the knowledge that I've come to know. I'm a disabled woman trying to survive in a land of men who think that they're the owners of other people's property. My dog was murdered on my property and I'm a disabled woman and that dog was a service dog. Any of you can understand that or maybe not. I'm a taxpaying citizen in this town trying to reestablish my life and come to find out that Bill Schaefer is allowed to do whatever he wants, destroy my water meter and having the city force me to pay a huge amount of diverted water of over 12,716 gallons of water. Don't you understand why I came up here angry all those times? I don't like getting in front of a crowd. You guys cornered me like a damn animal on my property. Sergeant McNally held me at gunpoint on my property when I was just basically doing my own work on my property to try and be a good citizen in the community. I don't have a service dog to help me no more and that dog was going to have puppies. He was not a neutered dog and he's been registered since 2004 after my accident. I don't like coming up here and discussing this to anybody, but would you like to be in my situation 24 hours a day with a surveillance camera on you, watching you every single moment? You have failed me as a community citizen and I've come to you for four years trembling in fear of Mr. Schaefer and now I've come to find out he's a retired reserve for the Willets Police Department. Thank you very much for your protection.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the council?
Hello. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Bobby Haggard and I live along Broadus Creek. I'm fourth generation here. My grandparents bought the place in 1936 and Broadus Creek runs through the property and back out and I've been cleaning the creek there since '89. And recently I came across a large pile of needles and other items that have to do with doing drugs and I didn't really know how to clean it up, so I posted it up on Willet's fan page and the community responded. Chris Ostrom, who's sitting here, offered to come up and clean it up because he deals with this stuff. He has a Pack Out Green Team out of Ukiah, California. And Chris and I have been talking and seeing if we can, he's offered to bring his business, nonprofit business to Willet's and do a cleanup and pick like five different areas to begin with. And so I went down last Saturday and we picked up nearly 500 pounds of garbage in Ukiah in just one hour. So, I wanted to see what the city council's feelings would be on that. I know that the community is supporting it. And the other thing I would like to try and achieve by next spring is to have a community potluck barbecue, maybe some music, something like that, to bring the community together down at Recreation Grove to see if we can get more support. And I know it's needed in other areas like Brook Trails as well. And so I'd like to introduce Chris Ostrom to tell you guys about what he's got going down in the Ukiah area. And thank you.
I'm not a public speaker. I'm not good at this, so please bear with me, be patient. So as I said, yeah, I'm one of the co-owners of Pacific Outfitters and one of the original founders and board members for our nonprofit, which is Pack Out Green Team. And what we are, we love the outdoors, we live outdoors, we play outdoors, everything's outdoors. So we started a nonprofit and we clean up the areas that we play. I started this in Ukiah July a year ago and the reason I started it was because they were gonna shut down all of Lake Mendocino for all recreation, everything. So that inspired me to start it down here and I did and it took off like gangbusters. I managed to work with Congressman Huffman, Sheriff Tom Alman, several county supervisors and a few other people and through an actual act of Congress, we saved the lake. And on an ongoing effort, we do our cleanups every other Saturday from 9:00 to 10:00. It's just one hour, you're in, you're out, you're done. And so we hit Lake Mendocino every other cleanup that we do, so once a month. And over the last year, 26 cleanups, we've cleared out over 23,000 pounds of trash, had over 400 volunteers show up and it's just been an amazing thing for our community. And your community here in Willet's is every bit as responsive to this as ours in Ukiah and I am just thrilled with the opportunity to potentially bring this here. What I'd like to do, you know, of course, if any, just like in Ukiah, if anything we're cleaning up is a city park or we try to focus on waterways and things like that, but I'd like to communicate with whoever I need to, to make sure access is clear and you're all good with us being there. But it's one hour in and out, we get hundreds and hundreds of pounds of trash every single time and what's really rewarding for me to see is every location we return to has less trash every time we go there, whereas the, you know, the first time at Lake Mendocino, the day use areas, anything that didn't go home with someone, like plates and silverware, was just left on the picnic tables. And now when we return to do a cleanup, we struggle to fill one bag. And other areas that we go to, you know, we're not finding trash that's three months old from the last time we were there, we're finding trash that's 20, 30 years old. But it's, we are making a positive difference and I just want to bring that here and do the same with you all.
Okay. I had seen the posting on the Willet's fan page and I don't know if you have a report or not, but I brought it to our attention and we'll probably deal with it at future time.
Sure. Well, I mean, I just want to say a few words. I don't know whether you're aware of this, but the city of Willet's was actually the first inland city to participate in Coastal Cleanup Day. We have actually a long tradition of community cleanups, which I'm really proud of, and anytime we have additional volunteers who want to do that, we think that's fabulous. Coastal Cleanup Day was actually about three weeks ago and we had a number of volunteers. There was a great spread in the paper about it. City collected some donations from Willet's Power and Mendo Mill of bags and picker rappers and things like that and it was great to see the community come out and do that. One of the challenges we face as city is most of these areas are private property, so city staff doesn't go onto private property. We can't do that. So it's really incumbent on volunteers to do that, hopefully with the permission of property owners and also with your safety in mind because you do find hazardous things there. And I believe that the county does have guidelines for when you have dangerous materials like needles or waste items or biological issues. I know the county has guidelines to follow. We have, again, we have garbage bags if you need them, we have those donations.
The county provides them already.
And you provide them already.
We're fully insured and we provide everything.
I think that's fabulous. The more you can, we can get volunteers out into our creeks, out into our wild areas to do this, I think it's great and we absolutely support that as staff, we totally support that. Anything we can do, we just, we want to caution you to be careful. We want to caution you to use the appropriate equipment and that's, you know, sort of our two cents on it and however we can help, I think it's fabulous in terms.
I also wanted to just mention solid wasted Willet's donates the disposal.
Well, on Coastal Cleanup Day, they donate the disposal fees and you can talk to them directly and see if they would.
All of my fees are covered. I've spent months working with the county on that.
That's great. And our police department, you know, they've also been really helpful in Coastal Cleanup Day in terms of when you hit an encampment, sometimes they can be asked to, you know, maybe notify people who may be in these encampments and just let them know that, hey, there's somebody gonna come and just to sort of reduce any incidents that may occur.
Right.
And so we love it. It's great.
Jerry, have a comment?
I have a question, Mr. Haggard. Where was this area that?
It's under the train trestle there.
At Railroad Avenue and East Valley?
Yeah, just south of the depot there.
Okay. There, your place, right there, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I did call police to come and take a look at it and I was a little frustrated at first that they didn't show up to at least come and look at it, like three days later. So I did take the time to approach some officers that were having lunch and sit down with them and talk to them and get better understanding that they're limited on resources and sometimes they just can't come over. So that made me feel better that I understand that they're limited on the resources, so I'm not frustrated so much anymore about it. It brought better understanding to me, which I needed.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I just feel that, and I have participated in the coastal cleanup as well, but I do the creek once a week.
It's great.
Quarter mile up into behind Mendo Mill. And weekly, I can show you pictures, but we don't have time for that. Weekly, there's new garbage there, so I'm appreciative of the once a year cleanup, but I feel that it's needed more and this would provide it.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on our agenda, we don't have any public matters.
I can.
Oh, yeah, sure. Please come on up.
Thank you. Georgia Ann Crosskey, third district supervisor, and actually I just wanted to just lend my support to this program. And I think they, the city does do a great job with a lot of their volunteer and their cleanup, but I agree, a lot of these places do need more than once a year. You know, I'm next to a public park too and we're continually picking up, you know, whether it's whippets or needles or bags or bottles, whatever it is. I mean, it is a constant battle to keep things clean around here and it takes all of us. So I just, I'm happy to see someone wanted to come in and have more organized volunteer cleanup and certainly any areas that, you know, are bordering city and county, just let me know and we'll see what we can do to help, you know, round up some of the county support too to come take care of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay.
Could you leave some contact information before you go?
Okay, so there was going to be a public proclamation, but it's postponed till next meeting because the recipients weren't able to come to this meeting, so that isn't on the agenda. And we do not have any enactment of ordinances this scheduled meeting. The consent calendar includes council meetings, I mean minutes of meetings, some restriction on parking on portions of Main Street and I think you might want to pull that because we're gonna have a little more background on it.
If you would like to do that, we can do that.
Let's pull that one. Opposing Proposition 6 on the ballot, a resolution on that, and Proposition 6 is the one that would basically take away transportation funding that was previously approved by the voters. And finally, an updated fee schedule on the Laco Associates contract that was approved a couple of weeks ago. So items A, C, and D, do I have a motion on that consent calendar?
I'll make a motion.
Second motion.
Okay. Any comments from the public on those three consent calendar? Otherwise, because it sort of involves money, I think we should take a local vote.
Sure. Councilmember involved.
I was gonna say yes, but I wanted to add one thing. Proposition 6, the money you're talking about wasn't enacted by the voters but by the legislature.
Okay.
Really good.
Clarify that.
But yes.
Yes.
Stransky.
Rodriguez. Yes.
Mary Strong.
Yes. Okay, so on item B, I know I needed a little clarification, so why don't?
We do have a staff report from our planner, Michelle.
Whose last name, excuse me?
Johnson.
Johnson, Michelle Johnson. She's going to come give us a little talk about our striping and our curb painting and give us some better detail on what that means.
We're gonna need to be able to look at. We are and I'm gonna apologize ahead of time. I pulled this together in about an hour. It's more for the data than for the grammar or spelling, so there may, potentially there's some errors, but.
And let me sort of qualify this. This is a report that Dusty Dooley put together. He is at a planning conference this week. He was due to be back. His plane was delayed, so Michelle stepped in and we were really happy that she's able. She's very knowledgeable about this and she's able to step in quickly.
So hopefully I can answer some of your questions and bring some clarification to what's being asked by staff tonight. Again, councils, I'm Michelle Johnson, assistant planner. And what staff is asking tonight is for you to approve a resolution to restrict parking on Main Street. This was actually, you guys, this is being brought back before you. It was approved back in December of 2016 with a vote of four to zero. It was based upon the Willet's Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan. Now that the Caltrans has started the relinquishment plan, phase one of that is to provide new sidewalks, roadways paving, including the restriping of the streets for the bike lanes, which again was based upon the Willet's Corridor Plan, which was approved in 2016. At the time, a resolution wasn't approved, so Caltrans has put a halt on doing the restriping for the bikes until we come back before you guys get approval. And that's what staff is bringing before you this evening. So I, for those, I did provide some plans for some. If you have, if you want to look at the plans in more detail, I did save it to my USB so we can look at that. What, the areas that are being proposed for restrictive parking are the east and west side of Main Street from Highway 20, south to Wood Street, west side, the west side of the road at the intersection of Van Lane.
I'm sorry, do you mean to the south edge of Wood Street? Because from Highway 20, it would be going north to get to Wood Street.
From, are we on one, two, or three?
On one.
Number one. So it's on the east and west, so if you're on Main Street from Highway 20, heading north. It's on the east and west sides. From Highway 20, south of Wood Street, I apologize. I was going off the agenda summary not to go to dig, so. And we can look at, we can look at it and fortunately it didn't show up as well as I had hoped to on the map, but I did bring my map too if you'd like to look in greater detail.
So both sides of the street?
And it's intermittent. And I did provide some pictures because what I did is I, with Councilmember.
Stransky.
Stransky, thank you. He had some questions. We sat down, looked at Google Earth and looked at, we actually got onto the street view and looked at what was existing. And we not only looked at what was existing for 2018, we went back and looked at what was there for 2015 and 2012. There's existing red striping there already, wherever you have driveways, wherever you have corners. A portion of that is already restricted parking and that's going to be, that's going to maintain, it's going to be there, it's gonna consistently be there. So there is, it's intermittently between those areas. The area that's going to remain unrestricted is the downtown area, which is identified in the plans. And then west of Commercial towards State Street. And again, as we go, when we get farther down, we can look at some of the street view and you can see that a lot of those areas don't have curbs, so it's essentially a mute point. North of Commercial Street, there's, the curbs don't exist. And so there's just intermittent striping that's going to be there. So let's move on and see what we, if I can address some of those. So this is from the Mill Creek Bridge looking south. And again, I apologize, it looked a little different on mine, it's a little pinker. I don't know if you can see, but there is some existing red already there. I more or less provided these photos just so that you can see, these are, this is a random selection of these streets at different years, so you can get an idea as to what the parking is and how it's being utilized. As you can see, in 2018 and 2015, this particular area doesn't see a lot of parking or is not being utilized for parking. There's, if you, when you go, if you do a site visit, you'll make note that there's a lot of parking lots, so the on-street parking is not as imminent as some of the other areas. So this is from Commercial Street looking south, again, 2018, 2012. Where it's, again, and I apologize, you can't see as much in here, as you get into more of the denser areas, you start to see the on-street parking being utilized. This is from Van Lane looking south. Unfortunately, based upon this location, I didn't have a 2018 photo, so that's why we have March 2015 and 2012. But you can see that based upon the 2015, it's being utilized more. Mendocino looking south. East Valley Street looking south. And it's, here you can see it better on the March 2015, there is existing red, the curbs are actually already striped red. I noticed based upon doing a site visit and actually looking at, when you look, because right now you can't actually see it because they're doing construction, but if you go onto Google View and you go back to before they had the streets torn up, there is a lot of red striping that already existed. Here's California Street looking south. East Oak Street looking south. So I wanted to touch a little bit on why the, why staff is asking for restrictive parking in these areas based upon the proposed bike lanes. This was an excerpt that I took from the Guide for the Development of Bicycle Facilities, developed by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. The number one fear for cities in regards to bike lanes or those that are proposing these facilities is the interaction between bicycles and vehicles, which makes sense. And when you look at where these bike lanes are and where the parking would be, there's, you're almost inviting an interaction between them because you're having to cross paths. So in order to, for the health and safety of the community, staff is requesting in order to move forward with the bike lanes, that these need to be made, this parking needs to be restricted or else we need to come back with and revisit the idea of having bike This is, I use these as an example. These are, these were photos that I found from San Francisco of where they had areas where this is a bike lane and why this is frowned upon because for exactly this reason, somebody could be in your bike, be on their bike here and this person is more, is focused on trying to find a parking space and pulling out or opening their door. This person here on the right is being courteous instead of, didn't want to take up the bike lane, so they parked on the sidewalk. And then this is another example of cars tend to take the stance that they have precedence over bikes, so just because it's striped doesn't mean that they can't park there. And then you create this, this kind of, makes the idea of having a bike lane mute. So staff is asking tonight, the recommended action is for council to adopt the attached resolution designating no parking zones for portions of Main Street from its intersection with Highway 20 to the intersection of Sherwood Road as identified in the agenda summary. The alternative would be for council to not adopt the resolution and provide alternate direction to stop.
And I just wanted to add one thing to that. This is in accordance to the Main Street Plan that was already adopted by council previously. Correct? Yeah. So nothing here is different or changed? This is actually a resolution sort of adopting what has already been decided by council?
Okay, can I just ask for a clarification?
Sure.
That was both in the staff report and also in the resolution, it refers to the number two and three, say the north side of Main Street between its intersection blah, 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 and the south side of Main Street, well.
That was an error in the staff report. So it was, and let's go, because I actually, I took some time to try to clarify that and I, let's go, let's move along here. Unfortunately, I'm beginning, let's see. Here we go. The east and west. And we, and I actually got Dusty on the phone because I wanted to make sure that I was, that we were on the same page and he said, yeah.
But number one, it already said east and west, so number two and three are both on the west side.
Correct. And if you, and I, so not only did I clarify that with Dusty on the phone, I actually pulled up the plans to make sure that what I was saying was consistent. And I'm not sure if you were able to see the red on your plans. If you'd like me to pass my plans along, I can, it outlines it a little better, but yes, it's on the west side, it's, the red is more consistent where it's a little more intermittent on the east side, but that's what it was referencing, not north and south.
West. So number two and three should say west side.
Correct.
Okay. And then other comments from the, or questions from? Okay. Larry?
When we have the bike lanes, if we get the bike lanes, will this keep the bikes off of the sidewalk?
And that's, well, that's the intention. We can't guarantee that, but that's the thought behind it, that it'll give another safe avenue for bicycles to travel instead of being intermixed with the cars.
Or the sidewalk.
And do we have to have signs on the sidewalk saying that it's against the law to ride on the, I'm really afraid of people really bike down there really fast down the sidewalk and somebody's gonna come out of a building one of these days and get slammed. I mean, it's, I'm surprised it hasn't happened yet, but.
We are actually, in our public safety report, we're gonna address that. Actually, the chief is ready to.
Traffic safety.
To discuss traffic safety.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe it is already in the code that it's not allowed to drive your bicycle on the cycle.
I think that you find, as I happen to be a cyclist myself, and if I have the option to go ahead and be in a safe lane of travel with traffic, I would prefer to do that because otherwise you're dodging traffic, or dodging pedestrian traffic. It's actually safer being, having your own little lane than having to deal with people because you never know what they're gonna do.
So I think both Suprina and Jerry have some.
Yes, Suprina's first.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm concerned, one, I was concerned that this was on the consent agenda and I'd like to ask that lately we've been seeing quite a few things on the consent agenda that we've had to pull and have further conversation with things like this that really impact the community and that they have input. I'd like to see them not on the consent agenda, but rather for further discussion as a standard. I think sometimes people don't always look closely at the consent agenda. And then two, I'm concerned that there's quite a few businesses along there and they may not be aware of the impact that this has to their business. And we talk a lot about revitalization to our community and I'm concerned that this is one more. is one more, one more blow that, uh, businesses are going to take. For some of them, they need that street parking, and I'm not sure that they've had the opportunity truly be noticed and, and, uh, come before the council and express their, their opinion on the, on the subject. I'm all for pedestrian safety, but, um, I, I'm not ready to vote on this tonight.
So, I'm going to add in, um, so I talked to Dusty about this, because I was not here with the Main Street revitalization discussions, and he explained to me that this plan had, in, in its entirety, including the no parking, um, was decided by council already, which is why he put on the consenting calendar. Apparently, there was already a vote to do this, there were numerous charrettes, and, and, I mean, I wasn't here, so I don't know that, but that's why he asked that this be on the consent calendar, because this is sort of what Caltrans was told, this is the plan, this is our Main Street plan, and, um, they are ready to proceed with striping, and if we don't do it, I'm, I'm not sure what happens then. But this is sort of a, it was intended to be a formality, according to our planning department. So that, I mean, I'm just sort of repeating what I, I've been told, I was not here at the time, but, okay, this is, Jerry?
And I believe you're correct, Stephanie, other than, I think me and Suprema were on the council then, but I remember as, I was, I think, chief at the time, they were doing the charrettes, and I, I guess I was a little confused back then that I thought there would be pockets of parking still, because like there for the, uh, flower lady, for example, or where the flower lady was, uh, that means they don't have parking. Is that, do I read that right?
Quite a few businesses that that's going to impact.
And so I'm, uh, I'm a little concerned that, um, when some of these folks, and actually Greta wants to speak, and we'll be willing to seat some time, because maybe she was a part of that, so.
Should I come up?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, why don't we open this up to, uh, public comment now on this item? And I have some things to say, but, uh, public comment.
Hi there, Greta Conny. Um, I was on the technical advisory committee during the Main Street planning, I attended all the charrettes, um, I also attended multiple meetings here as a community member while all of this was finalized, um, for acceptance by the council, that was. If my understanding is correct, it's not, um, completely banning all parking. There will still be pockets of parking, but it's limiting as much as possible so that you don't have the interaction between bicycles and cars. So there will still be some parking in those areas. And as you said in-
And we can bring, when you're done, we can bring those up, and, and maybe we can see on my, on the screen a little, where it shows where the parking is going to be, um, where it's going to be left and where it's going to be striped.
The other thing, I, I did ask Dusty last week what the net loss of parking spaces was, and he didn't have the number at his fingertips, but it was discussed in all of the meetings, um, leading up to this, uh, decision by the last council to adopt it unanimously. So, in theory, all of the property owners and business owners who were, at least were in business back then when this happened, which was just a few years ago, did have lots of opportunity and lots of notice that this was going to happen. It's unfortunate that this resolution wasn't passed then, so that we wouldn't have to be rehashing this now, since it was all vetted by the community, um, but that's kind of how things happen sometimes. I just hope that we don't have sort of collective memory loss for what was approved and understood at that time.
And, and my, and just respond, what my understanding is, we were going to just move forward, Caltrans insisted on an actual resolution being passed. We weren't going to come back, because we, was it done, but they said we need a resolution. So that's why.
So I, I have, um, a couple of comments about that too, and that is that, one of them is that I remember, um, the net loss of parking spaces being very explicitly, um, itemized and discussed at the time, and it wasn't very, very much. Uh, we sought to have appropriate bays where parking was allowed, and so, uh, I don't remember what the number was, but it, it, we discussed it, and it was approved. Um, and the other thing that I think is important to remember is that, um, we have an agreement now with Caltrans that instead of the heat-treated plastic striping, they're going to use paint, which is easy to change. So if in six months, or a year, or even in one month, if we go, whoa, that wasn't, didn't work out the way we wanted it to, uh, it isn't going to be set in any irreversible-
May I ask, can I ask, Chris, I was under the assumption that the paint was only going to be for the bulbouts, but as far as the, uh, the bike lane, is that also going to-
My understanding is it's going to be the bike lane.
Well, we're, we're using paint because that plasticized, uh, paint, uh, is slippery. There's a slippery issue for bike lanes, so that kind of paint is generally not used for bike lanes, is what our understanding is.
So that makes it, you know, that, that makes our job not easier necessarily, we still want to do a really good job, but it doesn't make, um, the decisions that we have made in that plan irreversible or really difficult to, to deal with later if we find it, we are lacking-
It's not permanent. And, and what I understand based upon, um, the conversation with Dusty, because these are the plans that Caltrans has moved forward, but if, if it is not approved, then it will actually cost the city more money to have to go back and provide a new plan that is different from what they have now. Um, and I just throw that information out there, just so that you know what all the alternatives are, or what, what comes along with those. So let me go ahead, and I can, I, I can do my best, identify what I have up here, since mine is, shows up a little bit.
Oh, good, yes. And orient us to each one. This is the-
Just to give you some reassurance, Suprema, um, that, um, there are, as you mentioned earlier, most of these areas where they're introducing some parking spaces do have off-site parking, parking lots, things like that. So for instance, Willow, uh, Flower, it used to be Flower Lady, um, they have the city parking lot right there, so people could park in that-
Oh, here he is.
Here he is.
So people could park there and walk down 25 steps to Willow.
Okay, so we're starting now at the-
So this is a highway tw- so-
Highway 20 is over here.
For those that got, who looked at the plans, this is on, this is page one, and this is Highway 20 over here.
Um, oh, over there.
Yes.
Okay, so this is going north.
Highway 20 is right here, yeah.
Thank you.
So we are going to be heading north.
Yes.
You want to take a look?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, so, right here, let me get my little pointer here. So this area right here, it's not in the point, you go back to my hand. So this area right here is going to be, uh, striped. Here, which is, it's existing, anytime again, you have a corner or a driveway, you're going to have existing red striping.
You say striped, you're talking about red curbing, right?
Restricted parking would be the proper terminology. So restricted parking will be right here, restricted parking will be right here. So heading north, it's going to go along here, all the way here. And again, when you look at Google Earth, a lot of that area is already, already has restricted parking. You have a driveway right here, so you already have a, a restricted parking right here, and right here, right here, and right here. So that's not going to change.
But you're losing those spots right there, from there to the corner that was-
So if you go out, um, and, and I don't know off the top of my head-
That's where the restaurant was, that-
Uh, yeah, so essentially, right here would be where the new restricted parking would be, this little area right here. Yes.
What is, what does that mean, and what does that mean?
That's a driveway.
Driveway.
It's a driveway right here. And is this for the bike lane? Right there, we have identified right here.
That is, uh, a buffer for the bike lane.
Okay.
Between the bike lane and the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have another driveway right here, we have restricted parking, and then we have restricted parking heading north over to here. Okay, so that was on page one, now we're going to go to page two.
Now, the street down there, that's Oak Street, so everybody can figure that-
So Oak Street is right-
Right there. Over here at, at X, at X W.
At, right here-
Yeah.
Is Oak Street. So, um, moving farther north, this is going to be restricted parking, and this is going to be restricted parking. Again, we have a driveway right here. And, and right here, we've got corners, so there's already, um, restricted parking that's required. Okay, so we're going to go to page two. All right, so, right here, we've got restricted parking, driveway, restricted parking, driveway, restricted parking, driveway, restricted parking. Across the street, we, again, we have intermittent, um, restricted parking, and a lot of this is already restricted. So essentially, where we don't have driveways and streets, it's going to be restricted in this area. And this road right here is Monroe.
Are you sure it's Monroe or Alameda?
Uh, oh, no, you are on top of this. This is Alameda, this is Monroe. I, I zoomed in too much, and, um, so this is, this is Monroe down here, this is Alameda. But essentially, both sides.
And there's an elevation of the curb, or at least there was, right, uh, right before Alameda there, and then it-
In this whole area, there is quite a bit of off-street parking for most of these businesses.
There are a lot of parking lots.
And as you've shown in your other slides, very, very few cars are parking in there. So, it's kind of-
The areas where, where it was consistently demonstrated the on-street parking being used was in the downtown, and there is no proposed restricted parking in that area.
Okay.
So we're going to move on to our next page. So here, this is East San Francisco, right here. So again, this is going to be, except where we have the driveways, it's going to be proposed-
And it's already restricted on the north side there, because we had a bus stop there. Uh, maybe the side of the driveway.
The west side?
Yes.
This stretch already is red-curved here, and there is some red curb across the street that's-
There was this, when I, when I did the Google Earth and went back two years past, there was a significant amount of red striping that existed. So red, restricted parking all the way down. I'm going to go to the next slide, and I'll, I can let you know what street we are, where we are.
That's West Valley up there, that's East Valley there.
Uh, this is, uh, I think, if this is, this is East, this is California right here.
California, yeah.
So California, we still, on both sides, are, are going to have restricted parking. And a lo, and a lot of this area coming up to this is where it, um, winds a little bit, um, so there isn't a lot of opportunity for, um, on-street parking, and I, and again, there is, um, a significant amount of off-street parking provided.
In all of this area, there is a turn lane in the middle, so it's on-
Yes, there is, that's correct. Okay, on to page five. I'm going to go back, because I want to make sure that we, everybody knows where we are.
Ah, no.
So this street down here is East Valley.
Yeah. Can you just-
Want to go back up?
Yeah, just to, I'm sorry, just to orient again, so, yeah.
So East Valley, so the next page is literally going to be just-
Right here.
Yeah, a little bit down.
So this is the liquor store over here.
All right. So, page five, up until he, we're going to have restricted parking here, and then on the, and we're going to have restricted parking up until here, and then heading north, this is not, this is not going to be restricted parking on both the east and the west side.
Where's that now?
Um, so this, this is, um, right past, on the backside here, was East Valley, so East Valley's right here.
We're not, we're not worried about the-
It would be in front of the bars.
So the bar is restricted, or not?
Um, in regards to the-
No, and the flower shop.
Dusty, address that question in regards to what was, what the thought that was put into where the bike lanes are and why it's not being restricted downtown. So let me go to finish up with these plans, and then I'll, I'll pass it over to Dusty. So this is no, as we head into the downtown, uh, right.
And that's so many feet from Wood Street, in where it becomes not restricted.
Correct.
And so, can, for everybody in the audience, can you explain approximately where that might be from landmarks on the, on the street? I mean, is it like the flower shop and that area, or does it go on down? Do you understand what I'm saying, Dusty?
I do, I do, I'm just looking for Wood Street, is that the, is that Mendocino on the right, or is that Wood Street? Right here.
That says Wood Street, right?
It says Wood Alley right here.
That says Wood Street right there.
And so it's Wood Street and then Wood Alley on the other side?
Correct.
There's a big long building here. Is this one of the, um, have you got much different buildings in there?
It said it's 260 feet, but I, it's hard for everybody to realize what 260 feet where it is.
Right, we want to orient ourselves with, with businesses, because we're a little bit more familiar with that. And they do show some building footprints on here, and, give me a sec. So Valerie's, uh, beauty salon, uh, is this building here. So the, the, where we, where we, the transition from, uh, the loss of, of parking to where we retain our parking is essentially, uh, right at, at Diggers and, and-
Oh, so someone could still park in front of the bar or whatever there.
It looks like the middle of, between the bar and the flower shop is that transition line.
Oh, okay.
On the, on the west side.
So everything from the, from the flower shop to-
North.
North.
And then, and this is a buffer for the bike lane, is that, was that it?
Correct, where this, this, um-
The parking is here, this is the bike lane, and that's a buffer.
So Dusty, this is where we start sacrificing the center of the turn lane, so that we have that buffer.
Right, okay.
Right, so, so, kind of just a quick recap, we, we, we always were facing the choice, going back to that December date in 2016, when, when the majority of the council was, was, was seated, and that was always the trade-off, is we had parking, we could have a bike lane, or we have a middle turn lane, uh, and we always, you know, chose, you know, two out of the three. When we get to downtown, it became important to maintain parking, support the bike lane, but then that, that left us with inability to have the, with, to also have the, the turn lane. Uh, when we get to the other side of town, where parking, what, off-street parking wasn't in such high demand, uh, or, excuse me, on-street parking wasn't in such high demand, that's where we were able to eliminate the parking and then, and then maintain the bike lanes still.
Right, so moving north from Wood Street.
So from here, and then over here, unrestricted.
Yeah.
Page? So again, right here is, um, where we have this intersection, this is, this is Wood Valley, or, or Wood Alley and Wood Street.
So the bookstore's on one side, and the bank is on the other side, and that's unrestricted, it's, you can park there.
Okay, and so we maintain unrestricted parking, and, on both sides, on the east and west side, until we get to here, and then on the west side, the restricted parking starts at this point right here.
And that is?
That's, uh, Van Lane.
That's, that's directly across the street from, um, East Van Street.
Okay.
And again, that's only on the west side, the east side maintains unrestricted.
Okay.
And, and then, uh, this is where we're only going to have crosswalks there, there, and there, instead of here. I believe that's Mendocino, uh, yeah, okay.
Okay, and moving on to page seven. So we maintain unrestricted parking on the east side until we get 27B, which is right here. So from here to here, on the east side, that's unrestricted. At this point right here, heading north, it becomes restricted again. On the west side, it is restricted along, across the way. So, and again, we've got a driveway here, a driveway here, a driveway here, a driveway here. So part of the, there's already existing restricted parking based upon needing to have that, um, that visual area, so you can come in and out without, um, hitting anybody.
And the merchants over here on the east commercial, uh, East Main Street, uh, wanted a lot of just direct- a lot of just direct access to their per- perpendicular parking, so that this is a lot of driveway spaces, almost all driveway.
Okay, next page, number eight. Let me go back real quick, just so that we can, we know where we are. Um, we come down here, we here, right here, we are at State Street.
So the area about where the new pub is gonna be, Dusty?
Yes.
That has parking in the front?
Yes.
That's right near the transition line, you know, where State Street is there, intersection with Main.
But there's almost all driveways on the one side of the street.
Right, once you gets past, uh, Dixie's Building there, and it's, it's all driveway space, and, and Hal made sure that Caltrans maintained that.
So moving forward north, towards Sherwood, um, Road, this is restricted, all on the west side. It is unrestricted over here, e- except for the areas, again, where we have driveway right after there, a little restricted here and such. And that's it.
So it's actually restricted there, on front of the church, and then it goes to driveways, essentially, from there down to the, to South Street.
And there, there's existing off-street parking there.
South Street or State Street?
State Street.
State Street.
So I think, um, did, was there a clarification that we needed from Dusty, or did we kinda get it?
I, I still had a question of what the, the pathway plan for bicyclists is through the downtown area. What will the, if there's got cars parking there on the street, how does, how does that also look?
We're asking what the, the bike lane configuration is in the, the main downtown area.
I'm just trying to understand the transition between, you're, okay, you're riding along on the side of the road, and then you hit the downtown area. How does that, how does that change?
Right, so, so you have a continuous bike lane. Um, uh, it's just, it, it's gonna go from where you're, uh, between a travel lane and a sidewalk with no cars, and then when you get to the downtown area, uh, you're gonna go to where you're gonna be bicycling between parked cars and the travel lane. But again, there is a, a buffer that's established, uh, between the travel lane and the bike lane, that, that's maintained throughout the, the design.
Okay. Any other comments from the public?
So, the reason this is a good plan is because, like Dusty just said, it creates a continuous bike lane. Um, so many of the areas in Willets where we have bike lanes are bike lanes to nowhere. And people who like to ride their bikes get frustrated, because they're going around a couple of blocks, and suddenly, there's nothing left for them. So this is a great thing, to be able to allow everyone who wants to ride a clean shot down Main Street, without having to worry that they're gonna be suddenly in no man's land.
And any other, did you have something?
Yeah, ju- maybe for council member, um, Sabrina's, um, little, little bit of facts. When we were going through this, we did, uh, understand that there was gonna be an extreme loss of, of parking, uh, on the southern end of town. Uh, it's about forty-five spaces in, in total, if my, my memory seeks me right, going back a couple of years. Uh, there was, as you're aware, there's a lot of people that participated in this process. Uh, and we didn't hear, um, complaints from, from businesses in, in, in that area. Uh, mainly because folks didn't use that, uh, typically, and they had, um, enough off-street parking to, to meet their business needs. Having said that, there were, uh, there was one individual who I believe owns a residence down across from the Mariposa and that general area, and their additional vehicles, uh, wouldn't be able to be parked on the street because of, of the configuration that was chosen by, uh, through that, through that project. Hopefully, you know, his solution is gonna be, you know, the ability to maybe park on a nearby side street, so hopefully that won't be a hardship. Uh, but this was something that was vetted with, with businesses in that area. Um, and certainly downtown, we heard a lot of concern, but in that area, far less.
Okay, did anyone else have a comment? Yes, Jerry?
You know, since we're gonna do paint as opposed to the...
Thermo plastic.
Thank you, thermoplastic, uh, and we already agreed to this. I think we'd be foolish to deviate at this point, 'cause I would think that we would be on the hook for any additional costs through Caltrans. And, uh, we can look at it, study it, if it works for us. Um, I think that's the right thing to do. I feel for the guy that's gonna lose that additional parking space. I mean, I try to imagine, over the years, there've been some folks that, I think, when the restaurant was in business down there, they did use the two spots there. They did have additional parking, so it's probably not gonna hurt them as bad if, in when that restaurant opens up, but, uh, so in that respect, I think it's, I, I kinda feel like we gotta go this route, uh, at least for now. So that's my two cents.
And I wanted to also add that, uh, Caltrans is really at that point where they're about to do the striping, I believe, pretty quickly. And we, we kind of want that, because we need, for safety, we need to have the proper striping and the pedestrian crossings and all that. So if we aren't moving ahead with this, we're going to see a significant delay, and I think we...
Oh, Maggi, can I add one thing? I think you came to me once, uh, a long time ago regarding the biking on the sidewalks when I was chief, and I think the hardest part when it came to enforcing that was that the bike lanes weren't consistent. So trying to kinda kick people off the street, or off the sidewalk, um, was kinda, there are a lot of folks with young kids that say, hey, it's not safe, because parked cars are there interfering with the, uh, with, they're trying to bike, and so they felt the safest bet was to go on the sidewalk, which didn't necessarily equate to civility when it came to folks paying attention to pedestrians.
Yeah, and also, if you're in the, the travel lane, there's a lot of hazard for bicyclists in the travel, travel lane. So having a dedicated bike lane and having that buffer, so where there is parking, that somebody's opening their, their parked car door, there's still room for the bike lane without swerving into the, to the traffic. So, um, I think, I think this is a very good plan, and we, we did go through this long process, and if we want bikes, I think this is the best we're gonna get. I think we might be ready for the vote, and if so, we need a motion, to sign?
I'll make the mo- motion to move staff's recommendations.
I second it.
All right, so we'll cover it.
Yes, Councilmember, Lawrence.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
I see the logic in moving forward with this, but I have to state for the record that I feel for the businesses that are in the new red curb zone, and I just wanna acknowledge that, that I understand that a majority of the people that participated in the final stages of developing this plan were the downtown merchants. I participated in much of it as well. Uh, it was a council before, so it came to the, to this decision. I'll honor that, but I feel for the business. This is gonna be another blow to some of those businesses, and I've heard, oh, there's nobody that parks there, there's nobody that stops there. I patronize some of those businesses along there, and I can just imagine the impact that it's gonna have to some of them to not, to be, for them, for people not to be able to stop there. There's a real tea that's on there. You've got an empty lot where you've got a restaurant, that's gonna have the impact for somebody who's potentially looking at that building as well.
How are you gonna vote?
Don't, don't rush me, I'll get there. Okay? I, I was patient. I, I said I respect the logic. Yes. Is that good?
That's good, thank you.
Mayor's show.
Yes.
I was, I was once cut off in the beginning of the first sentence of explaining a vote, uh, by the previous mayor. So, not the previous mayor, the one before that. Uh, just, when you get to the vote, theoretically, you're just supposed to be ready to vote.
Yes, Larry.
Um, originally, when we decided to do this, and we're talking about it, they were gonna close off the driveway into the parking lot, the city parking lot, between, uh, the Main Street Music and, uh, uh, the other buildings. And, uh, they did not do that. So everybody still has the opportunity, if they're gonna stop at an area and there's too many people for the parking spots, they have the, still the opportunity to turn in and park at that, in the lot. And, uh, that's a thing that, that as a, a police department, we're gonna have to monitor.
And we also need to make sure there's good signage for the, the big loop there, uh, between Mendocino and... Okay, so, um, that was our consent calendar. Information reports are attached on the building inspection activity.
Thank you, Dusty, for coming back for this.
I did notice that, contrary to what John Sherman predicted, September wasn't as big this year as it was last year. Um, you have the right to appeal if, uh, folks are dissatisfied with the decision...
I think she did.
That the council makes. They have the right to appeal in court, generally limited in ninety days. Uh, commissions, agencies, and authorities. This is for the various organizations and agencies that some of us are members of, on behalf of the city, or, um, so, let's just go down the line here, if you have anything to report on other agencies and commissions.
Uh, I was, I attended the LAVCO conference last week in, near Yosemite. Actually, it wasn't in Yosemite, and there were a couple breakout sessions on fire department issues and, uh, and I guess affordable housing. That became kind of the solution nobody really has, so that's all.
But Larry?
We didn't have any, any LAV, uh, any LAVCO or, or... Did you have LAVCO? Uh, MCOC is what I'm on, and there was no MCOC this month. Thank you.
Nothing new to report.
Okay, I have two reports of the Solid Waste Management Authority, which is now going by the nickname of MendoRecycle, met just after our previous meeting, the day after that, so it was September twenty-seventh. And, uh, there were some interesting reports having to do with the Central Coast Transfer Station, which has been very contentious and trying to negotiate with different owners for a place to have that station, but doesn't affect those directly. Um, they also deal with, uh, sharps, which we talked about earlier in this meeting, the, uh, disposal, safe disposal of sharps and medications, and tires, and illegal dump cleanups, um, and mattress pickups. But the main thing that was kind of a shock is that Robert Carlson, who's been on the job for just about a year, I think a year and a couple months, uh, is moving back to Sacramento. He got an offer he couldn't refuse, so, um, he is planning a meeting at the end of this month, and, uh, we're doing a recruitment for the director, the manager of the MendoRecycle. And, um, the other agency that I'm on is the EDFC, Economic and Development Financing Corporation, and we are meeting tomorrow at two down in New Caya, and, um, there's some bylaws changes and housekeeping, lots of financial reports, um, but I don't think there's anything imminently affecting Willets on that one. So, okay, now we are on city managers' reports.
Okay, we have, uh, an agenda report regarding a discussion to approve a legislative agenda authorizing staff to prepare letters supporting our opposing proposed legislation in accordance with the city's legislative agenda. Um, the League of Cities, as you know, um, puts together, um, lots of letters for us. Uh, they're, they're an organization that represents the cities throughout California. And legislation that is beneficial to various cities, municipalities, or is not beneficial, they usually take positions on, and they ask various cities to write letters in support of opposing particular legislation, legislative matters. Unfortunately, when they ask us for letters, um, it says, please write us a letter, we need it by, and it's, and it's a, a week, or, or two weeks. And our current council policy requi- any letter that we write on behalf of the city council needs to come to council for their decision. So that requires every single letter has to come to council. So what many cities have done, and which the League of Cities recommends, is that the council actually adopt a legislative agenda, and sort of, uh, announcing what their principles are. And if the, there is a request that, uh, comports with the principles of the legislative agenda that this council adopts, um, that gives, uh, the city's staff the authority to simply draft a letter in accordance with the League of California Cities' recommendation, and have it for either the mayor, the vice mayor, um, and if they are not around for me, to sign and then submit, showing that our city supports. Um, I looked at a lot of different, I, I was in contact with Sarah Rounds, who's the, uh, our Redwood, um, Division, um, Head, and, and she gave me copies of lots of legislative agendas of various towns throughout the city, around the, the state. Um, I found the City of Lakeport's had, uh, I took, I took and borrowed from here and there, um, generally used Lakeport's format. Um, I did omit, theirs was quite the laundry list. Um, I did, uh, I tried to excise anything even remotely controversial, and I'm hoping that everybody saw that list. And it's basically, we're talking about local control. Um, mainly things that would add, um, burdens to cities without benefits, things that would take away local control. Um, and, and that is the, the gist of the legislative agenda that I'm putting before you. And again, it's, it is listed, um, so basically, it's, um, you know, we would be against state and federal mandates without, um, uh, that would, that would require, basically, if there are mandates, we would, um, support that there'd be full cost reimbursements to the extent that there are mandates, and things like that. Basically, keep our control. Um, because as you know, and, and you've been, uh, we've been hit a lot with various mandates that come about, oh, you must do this, that, and the other, but yet there's no funding that comes along with it, and that is a big example of the things that we'd like to oppose. So I'm putting this in front of you. If this is acceptable to you, I can then go ahead and draft letters, and, and at reasonable intervals, I will be coming to you to show you what, what we've been doing.
Can I ask a question? So in practice, if you got a draft letter from the League suggesting that the city join, join the League in, in signing such a letter, having your ma- your mayor sign such a letter, you would approach, uh, the mayor with that and make that request?
Um, well, what I would do is I would go ahead and draft the letter, uh, on city letterhead, and I'd present it to the mayor for signature.
And if the mayor had some concerns about it, and didn't think it comported with the, those...
Then it would go to council. Either they would die, or it would go, it would go to council.
Yeah, and I ask the question too, 'cause some of these, um, guidelines or, you know, standards that we are, some of them are go-clear, and some of them are very discretionary, or there's a balancing act. Like, um, I noticed things where it said you, you'd oppose a measure that only minimally improved air and water quality while, um, while incurring excessive or unreasonable costs. Well, you know, what's minimal and what's excessive, and that, so there's some judgment calls.
Absolutely.
And when I just mentioned that to Stephanie, she said, if there's any doubt...
Yes.
Then it will either come to city council or we won't do it. But it, it needs to be, this gives enough guidance, so that if, um, if she feels like, well, this is a clear case where it's usurping, uh, local control, or it's imposing undue burdens and not really a benefit to our, then, then we go ahead and, and do it with a staff writing a letter and the mayor signing. If there's a judgment call that's, that's sort of, uh, iffy, then we bring it to them.
And, and I would like to stress, if it's even close to being iffy, I'm gonna either take a t here or say no, because, um, I think it's really important that the city come together on issues that are crystal clear. And, um, especially when you have lots of cities writing letters, um, we don't want to be sort of doing things that, that our public doesn't believe in. So it's, um, I think I have a, I've been doing this for a while, and I sort of understand what's controversial and not controversial.
And another proviso would be anything that does happen in between, um, council meetings, we would bring that to the next council, so that we would, not only the council members, but the public would be aware that we, we feel this particular legislation, we, we were clear that we could oppose it because of these guidelines, that kind of thing.
Um, although, not, not...
Not for decision, but just to report.
Just, yeah, I would report back. Um, I think it's important that we report back at regular intervals to show, these are the letters that we've written, this is what we've taken position on. Um, there are things that they, we've asked, that, that League of Cities has asked us to take a position on, frankly, that were real wobbles to me, and, and I've said, yeah, I don't think I wanna step forward with that one, that's...
So any other questions or concerns? Yeah, I think Jerry, and then Larry?
Well, then Larry, go first.
Larry?
Um, we've all been on, on these different committees that, uh, people from, um, the League of Cities have wanted a letter of support, and we couldn't do it for the simple reason that we had not selected an area, hadn't had a council meeting in that particular... selected an area, hadn't had a council meeting in that particular time. And I think this is a really good step in the right direction for the simple reason that there are some things out there that are really, that we would join the other people, and I think it's an asset to the city to be able to have this. Thank you.
Other comments?
Kind of echoing what Larry said, but, you know, being on the league representative, a lot of times they ask me, hey, can you generate a letter? Can your city generate a letter? I had to go back to the council. By the time we meet, the issue's come and gone, especially on legislative matters where they need a letter right away. The only thing I was going to add, Stephanie, is that on the league site, they actually have a, where not only will they generate a letter, but you just fill in the blanks and it pops out real quick on some of these.
Yes, and those are the ones I would use.
Legislative issues and stuff. But what I like about this is it puts out a policy, but anything controversial, then, I mean, there's some things I wouldn't feel comfortable having our names signed to, at least on my side, but this is generic enough for the issues that relate to the city.
And thank you. I tried to do the most generic areas possible. For example, some of the things I simply excised out completely, or anything relating to labor and employment issues, because we do have strong unions in this city, and that is a controversial issue, to oppose labor rights and workers' comp reform or basically taking away certain labor rights. I think various people have various opinions on that. To me, that's controversial. I took anything labor-related out of here, because a lot of these are actually, I know that many public safety unions particularly have been against some of the League of Cities' positions on certain things.
Open the public hearing. If anyone here wants to comment on these basically guidelines for issuing city positions on state matters. Seeing nobody, anybody else on the council want to comment?
Just general comments?
If you have a comment.
Yeah, I do have a general comment. This is kind of an uncomfortable topic, but we can't have it outside of the council chamber, so we'll have it here. And as that, I am not liking the process. I feel often the mayor is able to speak more often than many of the other council members, and I find it sometimes frustrating that if I have an opposing, a view that's different than maybe the mayor's view, that there's always a rebuttal. And sometimes maybe just letting each person speak would be helpful. And then also, too, the other thing that is bothering me is that, I mean, we're all pleased that we're getting out of here early. I'm sure we're all, I mean, it's nice to get home early, but I don't feel like we're really doing our full duty. You know, we have heard a lot about how, at the county level, a lot of things are getting delegated to, delegated to other people, and that the district supervisors are not always seeing the issues, because they really represent the voters. And I've done feeling lately that increasingly more and more, I know we're streamlining our agenda, but are we also giving up some of our policymaking decisions? I feel like there are times when there are things that are maybe discretionary, that we should be discussing, or maybe issues that are coming up in the community, that they're maybe not making their way to the council so that we can express an opinion on what's happening out there. An example would be, for example, we knew in the, most of us probably knew in the community that there was the stirring up about what was happening in the creek. I would have liked to proactively, rather than having seen this gentleman come and stand up during the open agenda item, this seems to be something that the community's passionate about. Why not speak with these people beforehand and potentially agendize it so that we, as a community, could come up with an action plan to enhance them? Because I didn't feel that they felt very fully heard or respected for both the work that they did and what they could offer for our community going forward. So I just would like to see a few more things come before the council, and us to be more involved with what's happening out there. I'd like to see, you know, look at, look at all the seats, they're empty. They are. Because people don't feel like this is their place, and it's our job to make people feel invited. We had talked before about, you know, we had the Boy Scouts come one time, and they did a presentation, and we had the peace thing. But we need to find ways to invite people into our council chambers and engage them in what's civically happening here. And one of the ways to do that is to every council meeting, or at least once a month, bring them in, find out what they're doing, honor what they're doing, and, yeah, just let's make two cents.
Any other comments, or are we ready to vote? I think we can do a voice vote on this question, but we need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Would you rather have a roll call vote? All right, so all votes in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that counts as four to zero.
And I have some more, some more items. Just want to let people know, I put in the newsletter for folks, the Senator McGuire's bill did pass. We have discussions, I'm in contact with Senator McGuire's office. They were obviously very excited that the Redwood Trail, the Great Redwood Trail bill passed. I know people have been wondering about financing and whether funding is a problem. He, their aide, Jason, expressed to me that this particular project is being transferred from the NCRM to what he said was the Coastal Commission, and that they have actually been allocated quite a bit of funding for trails, which is wonderful. Well, this is what he told me, but it said something different in the press release, so I'm not quite clear. But the agency that this is going to be handed off to after they resolve the debts of the prior agency is going to, he said the money is not going to be a problem, that he expects this to roll forward, and it's, he's incredibly excited about it. He's going to be meeting with staff to see if we've got any issues with the dissolving agency regarding encroachment permits or things like that, if they've been hanging out there. We really don't have. But we are excited, because this is actually going to start, you know, Willets, the walking part, it's going to start on Commercial Street where the Skunk Train Depot is. This is an incredible opportunity for the city. And again, it's something that we, you know, we called their office and wanted to be involved in, and they've sort of welcomed us with open arms. So anyway, I'm just super excited about that. We also, our grant writer, during the fires, we had, we had a power outage that did some damage to our server and to some of our IT equipment that required a lot of staff time and a lot of angst, and we learned that some of this was possibly reimbursable by the Office of Emergency Services. So we submitted a request, and we're pretty excited that they're going to come out and look at our records, and we're going to be, get our server at least eighty percent paid for, as well as some IT services, extra IT services that we had. So that's a great thing. Next week, or next council meeting, we're going to, we're going to have somebody here from Buxton Incorporated. They're an economic development assistance organization, and they're going to come and sort of talk to us about the different methodologies you can use and the different ways that you can collect data to assist in economic development. I think it's good, they've done some data crunching on the city, and it's some fascinating stuff, and they wanted to come and give us a little presentation, and they're willing to do that for free. And I said, if you're willing to do that for free, let's come on in, and we can learn some things about what they're doing in the 21st century regarding economic development and the use of data. The chamber held a housing summit on Friday. Dusty Dooley was there, as well as myself, and the new community development director at the county. We had a talk about housing and how to stimulate housing, the various things that could be done, and talked a little bit about our housing element that we just passed, and it was a very positive discussion. The, also wanted to update you on, you know, I did attend the International City Managers' Association Conference. I do this every year. It's an important conference. Some of the things that we talked about were, some of the notable sessions were on how to build resilient communities and how to help mom-and-pop businesses. And it was really fascinating, because, you know, I've been attending these for a while, and back in the day, it was all about, let's bring the big box to the community. That thinking has really changed, and it was fascinating. And now they're talking about the real value of Main Street and the real value to the community on building Main Street. The city manager of Broken Bow, Nebraska, talks at some length about their community development efforts and their building Main Street, and it was fantastic. There's a community of about 4,000 people, and I saw lots of similarities with Willets. And they were doing all these wonderful things, and he said, yeah, and it was, and we asked, well, how much did all this cost? And he said, $6.2 million. And my first question was, excuse me, but how did you get $6.2 million on a city of less than 4,000 people? And he sort of notched, and he says, oh, we've had a half-cent sales tax, and we've had it for 12 years and never did anything with it. So they happen to just have it in the bank, and so that's nice. So we don't have that. But it is definitely underlines the fact that everybody is, the thinking has really come full circle into admiring the Main Street and realizing that it's a real value to the community, and that was really great. We also had the speaker, Doris Kearns Goodwin was the speaker, and she's a historian, and she talked about leadership in turbulent times, and it was fascinating, actually. She's written several books. We also had some roundtables. One of those roundtables was on the green rush, and I think we all know what that is. And it was fascinating to me, because a couple years ago, we had these roundtable discussions regarding cannabis, and it was very, the only discussion was, how do we keep it out of our communities? That has come completely full circle. Now I have all these folks from North Carolina, or, I mean, Taki's saying, oh my God, we wish we could do what you were doing in California. And it's just very, it's very different. It's very different. And people in California were talking about their experiences in great detail, who are at different levels of legalization and allowing different levels of production and manufacturing, and it was very informative. I think Willets was a little bit of a, you know, different, because we've had some trade in this, some history, and so there are people who are very interested in our experiences as well. But there are cities in California that it has really been a great benefit to. I thought it was interesting. No one actually came up with troubles that they were having, because it was really meant to, like, what troubles are you having, what benefits you're having? We had some folks from Cathedral City, some folks from Grover City, who have all reported some very, very positive things happening in their community. So it was fascinating. Other roundtables included non-traditional staffing. We're all having trouble staffing. Everybody's heard about millennials and our issues with millennials, and how do we bring them to our city? And so it was interesting about flexible staffing and different creative ways we can get great people to work for our cities. So it was a great conference, and I think I appreciate you being able to attend that. And that's all I got.
What about the Concerts in the Park?
Oh, Concerts in the Park, of course. Update, we've been rolling strong on those. This Thursday is our last concert in the park. It is a local band called Funka Silin, and it's headed by Cherie Shirak, who is a local Willets resident, and her sound person is also a local person. And we really want folks to come out. It's been a very good vibe. It's been people just sitting back and relaxing, and little kids dancing, and it's really been a nice thing for the community. I've got lots of good feedback. So this is your last chance to come on out for Concerts in the Park for this year.
Tomorrow at five?
Tomorrow from five to seven at Rat Grove. Come here Funka Silin.
Okay, thank you. And department recommendations, do you have administrative or...
No, no. Public safety.
Nothing from you, Kathy?
I have one thing.
Okay.
You're all the way up there.
Okay.
So I just prepared a quick thing about pan thing, presentation about panhandling, and a lot of people have questions about it, about the legality of it or illegality of it. In the city of Willets, it's not illegal to panhandle. There are restrictions. It's against the law to aggressively panhandle or to follow someone to try to ask for money or to ask to provide services for money. It's illegal to panhandle within 20 feet of an entrance to a store or an ATM. It's illegal to panhandle to anyone in a motor vehicle who's entering or leaving a highway. And it's illegal to panhandle in public transportation. And again, that includes soliciting for sales or goods or services. One of the things I've noticed is that some of our travelers who come through here are very clever, because this mimics most city ordinances. They hold up signs that say, smile, God loves you, or something like that, and you know that they're willing to accept money, but they're not technically panhandling. So our particular city ordinance only makes it a misdemeanor, excuse me, only makes it an infraction, so only punish them by a fine to do any of these illegal panhandlings. One of the problems we've had with this and with some of the other ordinances that pertain to transients particularly, is that if we cite them for an infraction, that goes to the court, not to the DA. And because it's not a vehicle code violation, there's nothing the court does about it. So they're passing through, they don't have money, they're not going to go to court, they just ignore it, and the court ignores it. Most of the ordinances, if you are, get a second violation of that, it's a misdemeanor, so there's a little more bite to it. But you have to be convicted of the initial one in order for it to be a misdemeanor. One of the things that some of the, we've talked to some of the travelers that come through here, and they feel that Willets is a very transient, friendly city in that people easily give them money, and so they stick around. One of the things to discourage them sticking around would be to encourage people not to give them money. Marysville has an interesting plan. They, has anybody seen Marysville's panhandle? They have the same ordinance we do, but they have devices that are like parking meters. And on it, there's a sign, please do not give money to panhandlers. If you want to help the homeless people, or whatever, you can put money in the meter, and it goes towards the charities that provide services to, so that the people traveling through. I thought that was pretty clever. Yeah, a lot, we've noticed as law enforcement that a lot of people are very friendly towards the transients. In fact, we'll be citing some of them, and people know that's what we're doing and what their violation is, look them up and give them money while we're doing it. So that's kind of interesting. So they're off specifically panhandling, but including panhandling. We've had close to 600 police calls related to travelers or trimicans this year so far. And that includes trespassing, shoplifting, unwanted subjects, suspicious persons, panhandling and camping calls. So it's quite a drain on us. We've had, when I walked over here, we've had 9,647 calls for service so far, like I said, close to 600 or are related to the transients or the travelers. That's what I got. Did I have something else?
Traffic safety.
Oh, so we're having, on the 16th, we're having a staff traffic safety committee meeting, and it's not open to the public, but I have invited public input on our Facebook page, and we have gotten quite a response, or I have gotten quite a response, and they are really, really good suggestions. Some of them I know we can't do, but they are excellent, some of the things I hadn't thought of. And so I'm going to present that, and Dusty has some ideas, and the engineering department does, and we're going to get together, and any of them that we decide should go forward, we'll bring them in front of the city council. And also, some of it can be taken care of. And also some of it can be taken care of with extra patrol by police department. Is there anything else I forgot?
Any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Okay, and then, Jim?
Yes, I just wanted to talk for a moment about the Measure I, the cannabis excise tax. It's going to be on the ballot in just about a month. And it lets you know that it is permissible for you as public officials to advocate one way or another on that. And you just can't use public resources. And so you can't, you shouldn't use your city-issued email address. You shouldn't use letterhead, which is paid for with taxpayer money. And you shouldn't use the resources of your staff to help you write, for example, a letter to the editor or write a speech that you're going to give to the Rotary or something like that. So it really needs to be absolutely no public resources. But there wouldn't be a problem with the mayor or any of you making public statements about your position one way or another on it. With staff, it's slightly different. Staff's salaries are paid for by the taxpayers. And so if Stephanie, for example, or Kathy or Dusty were asked by Rotary to come and give a presentation, and if it was during a time in which they're being compensated by the city, they really should only give a factual presentation, an impartial factual presentation, which could talk about the nuts and bolts of the ordinance, but not any kind of advocacy for it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. All right. So community development, Dusty?
Now we're going to see signs saying, please help me pay my fine for the city. But I like that idea from Marysville. I wonder if that's something we could follow up on? That sounds right. Just a couple of things. There's some information that we were able to share that's in the city manager report. Happy to answer any questions. I should say, I'm Dusty Dooley. I'm your community development director now. Thank you. We just took a big step forward in implementing the Main Street corridor plan. We have a long ways to go to continue implementing all the measures that were found in that award-winning plan. The city of Willets, you guys all won an award for your efforts there. And you should be proud of that. I think council, staff, the rest of the community is very anxious to realize the other improvements that are in that plan. Pedestrian safety measures, beautification efforts, lighting, trees, et cetera. Probably the number one question I get, understandably so. We have REVITE Ed, Revitalization Economic Development Committee meeting. It'll happen on October 23rd. It's a Wednesday, 3:30. We usually go to at least five. And what I'd like to do is prepare a report that goes over some of the next steps and staff's understanding of how we're going to realize those improvements. We'll go ahead and present that and discuss it at the REVITE Ed level. Possibly make some changes to that report and to some recommendations. And then we'll go ahead and follow up and present that to the whole council. And by having that down in writing, that becomes really easy to, as people have questions and they're curious as to, well, why is it going to take a little bit longer? Why can't it just happen now? You know, we can point to hopefully that report and their questions can be answered, so.
Supremo has a question.
Is that the third Wednesday of the month?
Yes.
Are you set in stone on that date? The only reason I ask is because the Visit Willets Tourism Board meets that same date?
I think it's a Tuesday.
It is a Tuesday, yeah, thank you.
Tuesday, okay. Thank you, I thought I heard Wednesday.
I'll answer that by saying that it has not been agendized yet. But that was a quarterly meeting that was established in the council-approved calendar at the beginning of the year, I believe.
Would you repeat that date?
It's October 23rd, which is a Tuesday. And it will occur here in chambers.
At what time?
At 3:30. Yeah, although maybe the council wants to direct me to pick a different date. Okay.
I was just looking for clarification.
Good, very good. And then the other thing, I just got back, my suitcase is still in the truck, from the annual state planning conference. I got my planning door con. It was great. I really appreciate the council providing the resources for me to attend that conference. And I think, again, it was worth it, not only for myself, but because of the things I learned for the community here as well. I believe I took 11 or 12 90-minute sessions that were offered. I believe I took every class that was related to the general plan update. You know, part of it is certainly training, but the other part is the connections I make. It's often referred to as networking. So was able to meet folks like the community development director for Windsor, other planning directors throughout the state. Was offered up some general plans to look at from other similar communities that may be looking to tackle the same types of things that we may want to tackle with our general plan update. Made connections with state leaders. Made a connection with a gentleman who actually wrote the guidelines for general plans and helped the state do that. So these are wonderful resources. These are all folks that I believe would let me contact them and ask questions. And I believe I got some very good advice. Have not had a chance to talk to our city manager about it. But based on the things I learned, I think there's, be able to go over some strategies that I think will help lead us towards a successful general plan update. Yeah, anyways, there's just a lot of genuine excitement for Willets. People knew about the Great Redwood Trail. People continue to know about the Skunk Train. People wanted to know about the bypass. This is down in San Diego, by the way. So it's about far south as you can get. So people are starting to pay attention to our little community. It was real neat, so.
And I'm going to, just a quick, because this is sort of your deal, but I was, regarding impact fees, we have a proposal that's coming to us from RGS regarding developing some impact fees. And actually, also working with our fire district to, so that the impact fees will also benefit them as well.
Yeah, one of the things that came out of the meeting is low-impact fees for developments, about $10,000. And they were quite surprised when they asked what ours were and I said zero. So I'm not trying to say that $10,000 isn't a lot of money or that we should even try to go there. But compared to the rest of the state, where there aren't many people that are at zero and a lot of jurisdictions are quite higher when it comes to, but there's some other. Anyways, a lot of information I could share and I want this point. But maybe I'll get together a more comprehensive report for you folks, so. That was it, thank you.
A community member had asked me to ask this question this evening. And they wanted to know about the sidewalk drainage. If they, the statement was made that they only saw a few drainage spots along the sidewalk. And they were concerned about when the rain comes, is there something that's built? Can you explain a little bit, maybe for the public, about the drainage on the sidewalk itself?
Well, you know, Caltrans has their own designers that engineered the project. I haven't heard any concerns directly from our engineering department. But I think staff is anxious to see the design go through a winter. And if we do see drainage issues, then I would anticipate that we'd be letting Caltrans know that. And we would expect them to come back and fix any problems that may exist. And it's, you know, it's not horribly unlikely that there's going to be a few problems that they're going to be taking care of. So we'll see how the winter goes. But they're right to have those concerns, sure.
So they should be concerned?
To the extent that staff is too, you know? We didn't design the project. And, you know, we've, we're probably not going to realize if there are any drainage issues until we see some significant rain events. So it might be that everything's fine. And it might be that there's a couple of problems, but.
I know that there was one issue that came up at the Caltrans meeting by our staff, where the interface between the sidewalk and the merchants' entrance walkway was a potential problem area. And I think that they flagged some of those and are giving those, that information to Caltrans. So where we can anticipate a problem, we're trying to get it taken care of, anyway. Not waiting.
And are we going to talk about the Caltrans meeting? Because I can go in that in some detail.
I was trying to figure out now where the.
With our new format?
Yeah, with a new format. I think that's under city council committee and committee reports.
Okay.
So we're about there. Is there anything specific to public works in engineering? Are we?
I don't know.
So now we're on city council and committee reports, which includes the Caltrans meeting. But let's, again, if you are on a committee that has met recently and had something to report, why don't we start with you, Jerry?
Again, LAFCO, the conference, we actually, they canceled the meeting last Monday. The other one is, the cities and we haven't met.
Yeah, I think this is, my understanding is that this is more internal committees, like Waldorf and Sewer. Yeah, that kind of thing. Whereas the agency commissions is when we represent ourselves.
I guess it's the fire department one hasn't met.
Okay, so, okay. Then Larry, do you have any?
No.
No? Okay.
And I have one to report on, but it's not a designated committee of the city council. They're rather just an informational report. And that's for the Visit Willets Tourism Board. And just reminding you all that before we next meet on October 20th, will be the Wild Willets Fest. We're expecting about 500 folks to come out to the park for a Taste of the Harvest, a running event. Lots of vendors. It's going to be an exciting day. So I invite you all to come out and join us. And the day before, on the 19th, the Downtown Merchants will have the hometown, what is it? The.
Hometown Harvest.
Hometown Harvest, thank you. So come check out your local stores.
And do you want to report on the Caltrans meeting, which was just this past day, a few days ago?
Yes, we had our Caltrans coordination meeting this week. We are coming to the end of the Phase 1 of our Caltrans project. And one of the things that staff had some concerns about is, you know, we have been told consistently that this is, we are going to get a 10-year road. And this is going to be a 10-year road. And so our city engineer has been sort of poking around that and asking what that exactly means, a 10-year road. And if it's not a 10-year road, what do we do about it? Or if there are some flaws, if there are design flaws. And so we've been sort of having, engaging in conversations with Caltrans regarding if there are issues with the design or with the pavement or with various things. What is our recourse? And so they are, they have yet to sort of respond to us other than by saying that what they have agreed to do is to give us a road in good condition. And if it is apparent after the relinquishment, in the first 90 days, we can appeal to the CTC. However, they are not guaranteeing the road for 10 years. And that is not what was intended by the assertion that this is a 10-year road. It is simply sort of what it's called. It's called a 10-year road. And so that's a little frustrating for us. Some of the other questions that came up were in terms of the streetlights and the bridges. You know, what's supposed to be given to us in good condition? They did do an inspection of the bridges about a year and a half ago, sometime ago. And they said that they made the inspection, they made some minor repairs, and it was good to go. However, they are supposed to inspect the bridge within a certain amount of time before relinquishment. Because this project has extended, they will be inspecting. They have guaranteed us that they will be inspecting those bridges again. And if there are any issues, they will be making repairs to those bridges. Regarding the streetlight, it is the same deal. They said that it is, they have inspected them, they are in good repair. They estimate them as being approximately mid-'90s in construction. And they're supposed to last for 50 years. So that is their lifespan. They're going to check the software on those to make sure that they're okay. And they're going to give us the owner's manual, because apparently that's a thing. An owner's manual for our streetlights. So we'll get that. So that's neat.
Traffic lights?
For the traffic lights, yes. For Sherwood Road and for commercial. What else? So yes, we are somewhat trying to hold their feet to the fire in terms of giving us some assurances that what they're giving us is good quality. We will be doing a walkthrough. We are talking about drainage. One of the things that they are insisting on is sort of a partial relinquishment of the parts that they have finished early. We have sort of maintained that we'd like you to wait till the whole thing's done and do it in one fell swoop, so we can sort of see how it does over the winter. They are saying that that is not how it's done. That they fully intend to try to give us sort of part of Main Street and then do the rest later. But they will get back to us and see whether that's something that they can do. I think our city attorney has a find on that.
Yeah, I don't believe that there's anything in the record. It's, it would be a two-step process or a one-step process. I think it was always assumed it would be a simple, it would be a one-time relinquishment when everything was completed, including Sherwood Road. But the relinquishment agreement doesn't really address that. So it sounds as though they are now proposing it be a two-step process without ever having reached an agreement on that.
So that will be interesting because they are sort of of the opinion that they don't have to ask our permission for that. That they can just sort of simply do that unilaterally. And that's something that we are remaining sort of steadfast in. We're keeping on as much as we can.
Yeah, they are inquiring about precedents over the last, whatever, many years in other places. And whether it's standard practice on their end to do this kind of multi-step relinquishment. I have a feeling they've already made up their mind that they believe they have the right to do it that way. So we don't know how. But I also wanted to commend that Rod Wilburn wrote a very detailed letter asking for clarification on quite a few points about, you know, what assurances we have on the quality of the fortfurtship and the materials and, you know, and how does this get handled? And they have not responded yet, but they are going to put it in writing. And I think we'll have another set of go-around when they respond in writing. We don't see completely eye to eye, but.
But they have capitulated on a number of things. Some of the ADA access points, certainly the ADA access on commercial on the southeast corner, that is going to be changed to have wings instead of the bars that are there now. So we're really happy about that. And so there are things that they are changing to our requests. So I do commend them for, you know, we are on them and they are making changes when they can. So I appreciate that.
And just for the community to know that there's one intersection. I mean, the pedestrian crossings generally are going to be striped, as they do the restriping, pretty much where they have been. Down Lane is just going to have one crossing. And Mendocino Ave is going to have crossings on the east and west side and on the north crossing of Main Street, but not on the south side. So instead of a four pedestrian walkways, it's going to have three. And that's because there were constraints on, they just could not meet ADA standards for that southern crossing. And they really can't stripe it for a pedestrian crosswalk if it isn't ADA compliant. So we're kind of stuck with that one, even though there is a lot of pedestrian usage there. So people are going to have to get used to going around those three, the three legal pedestrian walkways. I think that was all of the reports on committees of the city.
Yes, Larry?
I want you to know, without the striping on the road, it's really tough to get across the road. Because when they, there's no striping, people won't stop for you. I mean, they just think that you're just walking out there. And I was amazed because, you know, all the time I've been here, we've been able to go across the road at an intersection. And boy, you better watch it going across without any striping.
And hopefully the striping will be done very soon, because it is, it's really dangerous.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, good and welfare. I think we're there. Anybody have a good and welfare? I want to, I have one, actually two. One is that we had a very lively candidates forum last Thursday, I think it was. It was Thursday. And we have the two candidates for the board, the third district board supervisor. And we have the three candidates for the city council. And both of them were very informative. And I think very. and I think very helpful for people deciding, you know, where the positions of the candidates and all of that. They are available on the Channel 3 video website, and if anybody wants that link, I have that. We have one for the City Council and one for the board, so you can watch just one or just the other, and they're about an hour each. You can watch the whole thing. I think Casey YX also has them on their jukebox, they have some reports, excerpts from some of the debates. So, it was very interesting, and then October 18th is going to be a candidates forum for the Willets School Board. And there are a total of seven candidates for a total of four positions, I believe it is. There's some long-term positions and then short-term positions. So, that, of those of you who haven't, you know, figured out how you feel about those candidates, you got a chance to meet them all, hear them, on October 18th, 6:30 at the high school auditorium. And I believe we have a closed session present, which is Conference with Labor Negotiators. Oh, yeah. Yes.
I just want to thank, I know Larry's an incumbent, but those of you that are here that are running the City Council for showing up and starting to get the learn-on, so to speak. I know you could easily just watch it on TV and go, yeah, or read the newspaper highlights. So, number one, I appreciate that you guys are here trying to, I had the benefit of working for the city for 30-plus years and growing up here, so there are a lot of things I kind of was up to speed on beforehand, but for those of you just at various levels, you've been involved or tried to get the information, so number one, I want to thank you guys for that. Serving on the City Council, I think Suprema pointed out, people do try to reach us by different venues, whether it's Facebook. Honestly, I got to tell you, I don't do Facebook because of the negativity sometimes that lives there. I'd rather do face-to-face, but I got to tell you, the, one of the things I lobbied for when I got on the City Council was a city email and a voicemail. And if you call and leave me a voicemail, I actually get an email that prompts, pops up that you left me a voicemail. And if either, when you guys get on there, that, you avail yourselves of that. So, I find I run into people when I'm out walking my dog, or at the store, at Safeway. Sometimes my wife says, she really hates sending me to get something at Safeway, because people stop and chat with me, but I figure that's what I'm making the big bucks doing this for, is doing that. So, I wanted to point that out. And also, I want to thank staff. You know, one of the things I tend to do, and I sometimes apologize when I do it, but I do approach the city manager or the city attorney, the police chief, and I send them an email saying, hey, I heard this. Usually, I obviously go through the city manager and say I read this, I heard this, or I call, in fact, I was on the phone with the city manager today. Sometimes I read, I'm on so many listservs when it comes to legislation or case law, that depending on what's up, I sometimes pepper them with, with things like, hey, are we dealing with this or not? I kind of feel like I got to give them a chance to step forward and deal with that, or if it's a citizen. And then if I'm getting the, the report that, hey, they're not, they're not being responsive or something, then I think it needs to come up here for us to kind of start dealing with it. But I try to let staff do their job, so that they have a chance to address it. Obviously, there's some folks that, you can give them a $100 bill and a trip to Paris, and they're probably still not going to be happy. But the nature of the beast is that we bring those concerns in here. So, I kind of wanted to use this forum to thank you for showing up, and it's not a Monday-through-Friday, nine-to-five kind of position, you, I get contacted, sometimes I find emails at 3:00 in the morning, and you wonder what, sometimes I'm up at 3:00 in the morning, and so I go, wow. And I've actually responded to people at 3:00 in the morning, and they go, you're up? And I go, you sent me an email. So, I just wanted to point that out, and thank you, it's part of the process that we do, and we have staff that takes care of things, and if they don't, we want to hear about it. And same thing for those of you out in the public, if you want to get ahold of me, you catch me around town, catch me walking my dog, just sometimes if you come too close to me, my dog might not like it, but you can leave me a message or send me an email. And I may not have the answer, I may not be the conduit for that answer, but I will try and direct you. Sometimes I've sent folks to the board of supervisors, because that's their purview, not ours, so, thank you.
I agree with that. And so, we are ending the open session, we'll have a closed session. If there's anything to report out from the closed session, we will do so in this real end of the closed session. Thank you.